Fifth Tuesday, overtimes working study session for council. We have a full council in attendance and so we'll start with our first item on the agenda, which is an economic update and future considerations. I'm the economic development director, Denise Stevens.
Mayor, can we just do a quick introduction here of the new employee?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and Jocelyn asked and I totally forgot.
Why don't you make an introduction here, but she's not new to the CAPPers. True.
Quickly, we just want to take a couple of minutes, so I'd like to introduce you to our new planning manager, Michael Sutherland. And we're really excited, I think it's day 11 or 12 maybe at this point. It feels separate. So just wanted to make sure that we introduced you to him and we're very excited that he's here and on board and he's been a planner for quite a while, so all that expertise that he brings to Littleton, so just wanted to say hello.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've been a planner, a professional planner for quite a while. The last 13 years, I was in the Siding County of Brimfield. And before that, I worked in Aurora. And before that, I started my career in Thornton, a Denver native. I've been here all my life, you know, familiar with Littleton. I actually live in Denver. My wife and two kids were in the Congress Park neighborhood. Certainly, one of the great things that attracted me to Littleton was that downtown area. And I've known Ernie Rose since I worked in Thornton. We worked in Thornton together. So and I've kept in touch with Ernie over all these years and he always told me what a great place it is to be. My wife is a teacher and she works for the Cherry Creek School District at West Middle School. And so it's great to kind of reorient my life southward. And I'm just thrilled to be in Littleton. It's a great pleasure, so. And I'm sort of the new Carol, I guess.
That's right.
Yeah. Thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you so much. Great pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jocelyn.
Let's go ahead and proceed there, Denise. I've got some questions. Denise and I have kind of talked a little bit about this presentation. I got a few comments to add to this as we kind of move through, but I think we're, the timing is kind of a unique opportunity for us and hopefully that'll be apparent here as we get into that.
Thank you, council, for taking some time to hear an update and some of our recommendations. Tonight, we'd like to cover some of the programs and activities of our economic development department and we'd like to review some of the things we know about current trends and then review some broad concepts and seek your input on how we might go to economic development in the future. So let's start with one of our main tasks, which is business retention. This slide has a lot on it, but it's all related to one business. So when we're working to retain businesses, this isn't just about retention visits to their site. It has to do with trying to capture them when they are first looking at Littleton. We schedule meetings with them. We work to publicize what they're doing. We find out if they need grant money. And then we also have a tickler in our system that every 30 days after we've worked with somebody, we get an email that maybe it's time to follow up with them. We answer state inquiries that come down from Metro Denver. If somebody is looking for a site and we have something that meets their specifications, then we provide a fairly comprehensive response to that. We also have information we can provide directly to site selectors or developers where we can take a particular type of retail business and we can compare it apples to apples to another location that they have that has similar demographics and we can show them that one or two or more sites in Littleton would at least meet their standards. We have developers or commercial real estate people that are interested in a property. Then we provide them with preliminary comprehensive information with aerial maps, photos of the site. We give them the zoning, the current zoning, the assessor information, and then we provide them with the land use table and what is permitted in that zone. As you all know, because you are kind enough to give us the funding for it, we manage the revitalization incentive grant. This shows what we have awarded in the private investment over the last several years. We're over $8 million in private investment for $313,000.
Question to this slide. So the allocation to the last three years is $100,000, but you've come in under for the grants. Why are the awards so much lower?
Well, if they, you know, it takes a while for people to understand this and participate. So what happens is, is if there's money left over at the end of a given year, that money returns to the general fund. Or if it's a project that straddles two years, then we put in a purchase order for the amount and then we pay it out of carryover funds from the prior year. But it has been kind of slow to get people interested when we first started. Things were just on the uptick and now there's a lot more.
So there just haven't been enough applications to fill it?
Correct. So in economic development, a lot of people try to take credit for their points.
Can I back up to the site selector, Denise?
Yes.
Sorry. The direct-to-site thing with the median household income. Are you able to also tell them ranges of incomes, like brackets of incomes?
Yes.
40,000 to 49,000 and so forth?
Yes, we can give them very detailed demographic and expenditure information.
Since it wasn't there, I thought.
This is a, this is a unique kind of software that is more to finding a particular retailer and another one in a different city that succeeds and just giving them, showing that we have that market for them.
Thank you.
So a few of the things that have occurred, a lot of things happen organically, but a few of the things that have occurred over the years that we feel we've had direct influence on are the Falls Events Center, Chatham Financial. We will have a council tour to that business soon. Both Marriott Hotels, View House, Angelo's and the Carboy Winery. And then we've met several times with Jackass Hill Brewery as well. We have, yes.
When you say that you had a direct effect on this, what is that?
Well, Falls Events Center, for example, when they first were looking, which was about 2013, they at some point pulled out of their desire to own the property and build there. And so I kept following up with them and I sent them information on adjacent developments and told them that it didn't look like it was going to be incompatible. So they did come back to the table and they built it. And with Chatham, they were outside of Littleton and they said they were looking for office space. So we were able to find them the right space and then they brought with them substantial primary jobs and they are within the city of Littleton. Put quite a bit of capital investment into this particular location. With the hotels, they contacted us before they were ever breaking ground and they asked for information about potential competitors, people that would be doing business travel in the area and all of those things. So we provided that as time went on. View House, we started meeting with from the very, very beginning when they were first looking at a location. We worked with them about their valet parking, talked to them about grant funding. Same is true with Angelo's. Angelo's was going to buy into the location at Aspen Grove and then it fell through. So community development notified me about them. We got in touch with them and pointed out this opportunity in Breckenridge and then worked with them and also introduced the grant to them. Jackass Hill, we met with them from the very beginning when they were first being shown the property. Showed them all of the issues with it and have worked with them to move forward so that we could apply the grant to their improvements.
Back to the Falls Events Center. I have heard that they're bankrupt and owe the city a substantial amount of money. Not true?
No, they have had issues with other locations. Apparently, there's been something that wasn't quite true about their income projections for their other locations, but I have not heard anything at all about this one being a problem. There's been judgments against them in Utah. I don't know, you know, we can't bet their investment strategies unfortunately, but we're, we're trying to kind of keep a lid on that because we don't want to compromise their decisions here. But they do not send any money.
For the business attraction, this is just a snippet of it probably, but it seems it's more companies coming to you trying to get information about things. How often are you going out there actively seeking, you know, a very specific business? You know, I'll use like Shake Shack, for example, when they came to Denver and it's like, oh my God, this is the first business, the first one in Colorado.
Oh, there's a second one in Highland Ranch.
That was my next point, the second one's in Highland Ranch. How active is it saying, hey, we want this name in Littleton. We go out and tell them and pull them here rather than answering questions they may have?
We have software that tells us who's expanding and in what area that they're considering. And so we do reach out to the site selectors for that particular region and we let them know. We give them things like we just showed you in that sheet where we're talking about other locations that are doing well with similar demographics. So yeah, when we know that somebody's expanding, we do reach out to them ahead of time.
What about more proactive and not someone that's expanding, say, hey, you have a, you know, call it a big name, Shefton Denver, say, you, we want you, if you're thinking about this, even before they're thinking about it?
We've done that. We have. We do that fairly regularly.
Denise, you might talk a little bit about some of your interactions at Littleton Village. I know that you, there's a lot that council does about you.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's owned by a gentleman named Jackie King and ever since he revealed that he owned the property and had submitted some concepts, we were working with him to say, here are businesses that we think would fit well and we'll make contacts for you or we'll get together with your representative and try to lure them here. And he has not been very responsive. So we've actually had people that have been interested in sites at Littleton Village and their representative at the time weren't, they weren't responding. So we kept reaching out to them, hoping that if they weren't going to respond to Littleton Village, maybe we could pull them to another location in Littleton. But we do that all the time. I've worked down the Erickson and County Line Development where the hotels are. I've worked continually with the owners of that property. When they say we'd like to draw a restaurant, we put together marketing information and make suggestions and contact people who would be looking for sites to try and pull them to that location.
I'm going to ask a question that you can hold until later if it comes up in later on in your presentation. Some of what you've shown us thus far is a very, much more formal process. Some of this, you know, question that comes asking like, how do you reach out or, you know, how do you pull people in is a bit more informal. Do you feel that that needs to be formalized in some way or is that just the nature of how you do business?
It's kind of, well, you know, if you can make contact with the site selector, which we've found other resources that help us find those people that are making those decisions, then you can provide them with information, but it's basically a mathematical equation. Nobody's going to land anywhere if it doesn't pencil out. So we can provide them with fundamental information, but then they determine whether or not it's financially feasible for them to be in a particular area. And then this is also in the presentation a little bit later, but it's important to remember that retailers are not looking at cities, they're looking at regions. And so the information we provide to them does justify them from a regional perspective. We just provided traffic information with our new platform to, somebody was trying to pull a grocery store into Littleton and we were able to give him information that said regionally, this might succeed because of all of the traffic that comes from outside the city boundaries. So we can provide him with all the information. We can be proactive about reaching out, but the bottom line is, does it work for them?
The follow-up to that question and to Denise, and to you, actually probably to all of us as council, should we reflect on what the gaps are in our city from a retail perspective? Identify those, commit to those and determine what are the things that we could be doing between policy, land use, maybe some of these incentive programs to say, we are looking for these kinds of businesses to come to Denver so that we do become very proactive in seeking out a certain type of business? Should that and can that be something that we do?
Well, it is something that we do. For instance, if we understand the concept of a particular development and we know who they're like.
The other way around, we as a community and a city are saying, we need, we want a specialty grocer and here are all the reasons why. And then we proactively go out and woo some of those.
We have done that.
I know, I know. And that's why I'm saying, some of that has been informal. Do we need to formalize it as a council?
Well, may I bring up just a conversation we just had? Jocelyn and I had breakfast with Tammy Lord's with SRS Real Estate and she's a real wizard when it comes to knowing how to attract retailers. And we said, so what is it we need to do as a city to bring the kind of retailers we want to this city? And she said, you have to line up what you're willing to do in terms of incentives and you have to make that clear and you have to market that.
So part of what happens too is what happened out in Highland Ranch and Anshus is that those retailers are waiting to see who's going to bite first. And when they see someone like Shake Shack go, okay, we're going in, then boom, 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 they just all lined up and found their pads and opened them up. And so they watch each other very, very closely.
That's absolutely correct.
And rooftops count. That's a huge office complex now because of the hospital, all those things. We've got a lot of areas of town that just don't provide the rooftops. 900 acre park.
That's correct.
Mayor, I think maybe answering the question maybe a little more directly from, at least from my perspective, I do believe we have two opportunities now that kind of in front of us here that kind of hopefully point us in a direction where we need to start thinking that way. One of which is our Bellevue Corridor. The council just approved the vision document there. And I think that staff now is looking at an implementation strategy or work plan. And so we're going to touch on some of the details of what that could be. And so I think what we're looking for is for council to kind of react to some of these general concepts and let us know if you have some interest in it. And then we as staff will kind of push through the detail of the policy issue and eventually bring that back. I think the other big issue quite honestly is our comprehensive plan because that is an opportunity to take the vision process here and then integrate it down into the comprehensive plan. And specifically, there's an element in there that I'm looking towards is the economic analysis of that comp plan. Can we afford that vision, that future land use map? And I think that would, and my hope is with that is it'll start to have a conversation about quite honestly, the gaps. What does redevelopment look like for this community in the long run? And so if that's our, our best strategy for us as a city to sustain ourselves, then what is it we're missing? So I think it's a great question. That's why I think now is the time for us to kind of recognize that and maybe talk about some of these strategies that we could flesh out and get more detail as time goes on. Because remember, you have not let me forget that the comp plan is coming to you at the end of next year.
So that's coming the end of next year, but there are opportunities that are getting snatched up right and left. And if comp plan comes to council, then we have change on council, whatever, you know, will the direction be the same or different or whatever? So it's a, it's a, I don't want us to just say, man, go do something, but if we got the juice going, could we keep it funneled and put some move on?
You certainly could, is the short answer. And I think that's why we need, in my view, we need to have a conversation now about these kinds of concepts. Because obviously, the retail industry is not going to stop while we wait for a comp plan here. So things will keep moving here. And so I think we need to be very aware, aware of the fact that, you know, they say the changing face of retail is just different. Big Box is not going to be the answer for us, never really was. And so I think in the long term, as we look to redevelop this community, I think we need to be aware of these kinds of opportunities.
Well, and some of these things are sort of beyond our control. So for example, if we were trying to lure a grocery store here, say a Lucky's or Sprouts, they're generally looking for the owner of that property to give them severely reduced lease rates or donate the land or, or things like that. So part of that is beyond our control. Part of it could be our having conversations with developers and encouraging them to be willing to, to give on those things. It's also about percentage lease rates. So if you have an area that could be attracting somebody, a boutique retailer or somebody you want there, then you have to have a landlord or a property owner who's willing to maybe increase lease rates as people succeed.
I think one of the things to, someone to hear in this point is that these guys like to, they do cluster up. We've got all our hotels in one area. And so in our land planning and in our designations of what thing, where things should be and what should be there, we, we need to be conscientious of those types of things. For example, what we're seeing in terms of the senior living progression to assisted living places that want to keep, want to come in and we don't have, we don't have zoning for that. And so they're finding these places. And so like the one we dealt with on Mineral, is the market telling us that that, that office park designate commercial needs to shift and change and how do we, how do we stay responsive to that? I think, I think it would be helpful, Denise, quite honestly, if, if we could, if there was a way that you could start to show, maybe provide us what kind of trends you're seeing and what kind of clusters are going on and those types of things because that might help influence some of our decisions as we're, we're looking to somebody's choices. And Pat, I think you had a question.
Oh, just thinking about the Kmart when you mentioned Big Box up there. What's going on with that property up there? I haven't heard of it.
That's Inglewood. Kmart is in Inglewood, but the big Walmart property, this is another interesting story. Walmart leaves a property with 20-year deed restrictions and I can see why they do this from kind of a mercenary perspective, but it prohibits anything that could compete with anything Walmart does for 20 years. So the property sold to Delkovic and they were able to at least get the deed restrictions reduced to five years. So that is good news. And within five years, it may not even be an ideal location for retail. That's why we have to kind of remain on top of those trends. And I'm going to cover some of those that you have questions about in just a minute. So just so you know, we communicate through three main platforms. We have a pretty extensive business site on the city site. There's a how-to when you're starting a business, what we can do to help you if you're in business already and if you're looking to locate the things that we can do for you. We also have a GoToLittleton.com site. That's where our business directory lives. We have an automated update that occurs every night. Every time we enter a new business into our Salesforce database, that same night it appears on our business directory. We do have a pretty good visitation rate here, but we are going to update it so that it has lots of information that are more typical of an economic development site. And when we get to that point, we'll show you what that's going to look like. But it should have a plugin where you can get updates on the fly when you check into these various things. We also do a monthly economic development newsletter that goes out to all of our businesses and that includes trend information and new business information and other things that everybody stays in touch with what's going on in the city from our business perspective. So when it comes to the visioning and the comprehensive and area planning process, we make ourselves available as needed to community development. Right now, we have two members that are committee participants for the vision process. We do research and provide information as needed. We also will do plan review and provide feedback as those things are progressing. And then we provide outreach to our business and property owners. So what do we already know? And I think everybody who's on the table is pretty familiar with this. Sales and use taxes are 52% of our budget in 2018. And what do we know? Retail is really changing. E-commerce has reduced purchasing from brick and mortar locations and major retailers are closing. Retailers have reduced brick and mortar footprints and are requiring more to justify their sites. So again, that proactive part of it is becoming more challenging. Retail centers are struggling for tenants and revisiting configuration and they're including entertainment experiences. So a lot of lifestyle centers or retail centers are moving entertainment into the in-line so that. so that people are not out the outside for their entertainment, restaurants likely to come into the center. And so, we keep all of that in mind when we're communicating with places like Aspen Grove. And then just important to keep in mind that retailers look at regions and not cities. Okay, what else do we know? We have limited vacant land for new development. And developers right now are driven by the current market, which is assisted living, storage facilities, and apartments. Use by right projects mean we have limited control over what develops. And with the proper tools, we can encourage desired developments. And also, the economy's been good. Things have sort of migrated to this city naturally because of the good economy, but it's going to have an eventual downturn. So, if City of Littleton is to be economically vital in the current and future market, we need to add tools that can be used to bring desired development to the community. So, one of our first suggestions is to consider designating areas of economic significance. And as Mark pointed out, the Bellevue Corridor might be an interesting place to start. So, developments within these designated areas identifying, excuse me, identified by upcoming city visioning, area planning, and comprehensive planning processes, when approved by council, would receive considerations for incentives. They could even go to the top of the list of anybody requesting them. The other piece is that we could consider expanding the revitalization incentive grant, having money that would just be earmarked specifically for improvement projects that live within these designated areas of economic significance. Other things that we could do, help encourage a downtown district formation. I think everybody read the citizen and business surveys, and I think pretty clear there are some issues with traffic and parking that is a concern downtown. And without having a district formation, it's just not gonna be financially feasible to address some of those issues. Might also consider forming an improvement district in an area of economic significance for a mechanism to cover infrastructure improvements.
Could we just pause there for a minute, Denise? Let me just comment on the improvement district concept here a little bit. You know, my personal experience, I've probably done in my career probably over a dozen improvement districts, and for very specific purposes. And, you know, this is something that we haven't necessarily explored here in depth in our city. But I think it is an opportunity to take, for example, the Bellevue Corridor. If there are certain kinds of improvements that you want to occur in the corridor, an improvement district is a way for us to kind of facilitate this in a quicker fashion. Otherwise, you're relying upon redevelopment to somehow create these improvements over time. And so, there's a long lag between the interconnections of this. And an improvement district too, the city can participate in that at any multiple levels. And so, by history, and this is no surprise, but the more the city contributes, the more interest there is to participate in those kinds of things. And I think the Bellevue Corridor is kind of interesting. I use the example of the center median as, as an example. I think you can't really expect the adjacent businesses to somehow build that center median. So, somehow, there needs to be a strategy where the city kind of steps in and builds those kinds of improvements, perhaps as part of an improvement district. Again, this is more about self-determination, and I think this is new for us, and this is something that Denise and I have talked about. But this is where the city can facilitate a conversation about things like these kinds of tools and talk about how, how this may be to their advantage. And the city has all sorts of kind of financial advantage. We have some challenges, obviously, in our capital projects fund. But assuming that we can solve those kinds of issues, for us to be able to kind of hold that debt and have people pay us back over time is a very common model for cities.
So, if we could identify a manageable piece, whether it's the one you just said, and really put money to it and get it done, it would leverage additional projects. And it would be a showpiece in attracting, right? I mean, it'd help market for other projects.
Absolutely, that's the intent.
And like, so I'm, I'm wanting us to not keep figuring out how we hit the switch. So, and that wasn't a, you know, faulting, it's just, hey, I'm, I'm ready.
Well, staff certainly is. Again, you know, this is your first opportunity to kind of talk about this. Again, it's new for the city. We haven't really, to my knowledge, we haven't done an improvement district. Maybe as part of a utility project perhaps, but...
You think on Bellevue would be an improvement district?
Could be, could be.
The city's done BIDs before, hasn't it?
Well, there's many different levels of improvement districts. It doesn't have to be a formal BID, Business Improvement District. Improvement district in a general sense is a way to kind of assess a cost to adjacent property owners regardless of their, of their land use type. And so, again, there's many different tools, and that's why there's some education that's important here. You know, obviously for the entire city organization, council, but obviously for the community. So, there are different ways to approach that depending on what your goal is. So, again...
Yeah, South Park was not a business district, but that was...
Okay.
Some of them.
Yeah, metro district is kind of a variation of that.
Yeah, sort of, but not really.
Yeah, it's a, a metro district is perhaps a different way for a new development project to kind of take some of their larger infrastructure costs and disperse that over time to the future property owners. Here, an improvement district is, is different, where the city is the one who kind of leads this. And again, the city can subsidize that at any different level. And then the adjacent property owners can pay a proportionate share. New for us, lots of education about concepts like this so that people are familiar with it.
So, another thing, we, we actually had a development agreement when the Meadows at Platt development came out of the ground.
Which one?
Meadows at Platt, so Dunkin' Donuts and all that. And one of the things, a piece of that was that they were not going to be allowed to complete the residential piece until they completed a percentage of the commercial. And if, if we'd had that in the development agreement for Littleton Village, then we'd have a little more leverage. We're kind of at the mercy of the developer at this point. So, thinking about what you would want to integrate into development agreements so that people have to comply, and then we have a balance. A lot of people will say, well, the commercial won't come out of the ground until we have those rooftops built. And that's not true, because I've been approached by one of the new parcel owners or property owners of Littleton Village. And he said, all I need to know is what's out of the ground and what's proposed, and then I can go to retailers with that. So, it doesn't have to all be built, it just has to be planned. The other piece, and this would have to be carefully developed with capacity, is have an accelerated development review process for projects that we really wanna see happen. And that could be within very highly defined structures. So, you, you could be bringing something that meets the standards that we have in our incentives policy, and you would be complying with the needs of the community or design standards of whatever you want to include with that.
If I may, let me just comment on that. This is, this is an issue I've raised with our staff internally and perhaps mentioned it to a few of you. But, you know, it is a practice that I've seen in other cities where you've got these areas of economic significance, and you would like to see certain kinds of projects. And so, many times, kind of an accelerated review process is one incentive. And so, the city may, may even pay for that as part of an actual incentive. Currently, we have a challenge today, just based on the workload on our staffing. But it is something that in the future, we could look towards once we kind of solve a lot of our internal challenges. In fact, we'll have a presentation here later this fall on the work that we're doing today to try to make our, understand our systems, our processes, and make it more predictable for the development community. We'll talk more about that here in the near term. But I just wanna make sure that this kind of concept, the council's aware of, that we could pursue. It is an interesting incentive a lot of times for very specific types of projects that perhaps the council's interested in.
I wanna go back to the BIDs.
Yes.
There are different degrees of BIDs. And I'm almost certain that when, in the first couple of years I was on council, I sat in on meetings related to BIDs in some way. I'm not remembering this well. But they might have been minor ways of improving an existing area. And it seemed to me there was something as minor as, how trash trucks were gonna be going in a business area to make it a more attractive thing. I mean, so you can have different degrees of trying to improve those things.
Absolutely, yeah. You can scale the level of responsibility here to all sorts of levels. Now, BID, a Business Improvement District, has its own governing authority. And so, they're kind of a standalone governmental entity to a large extent. When I use the word improvement district, that's kind of just a general category of kind of a financing option to how to deal with. And many times, the city takes the direct responsibility of an improvement district. So, again, you're right, there's many different tools. And you can scale it to all sorts of levels depending on how far, you know, the adjacent property owners are interested in pursuing improvements. It could be physical improvements like streets, it could be landscaping, or it could be as simple as just managing programs.
And some of those, the reason I mention that, because some people actually watch these meetings live or... is there are some things that some business areas, might, might be larger than ever, might do to help attract more people or make it more, make them more accessible or whatever.
Yeah, I firmly believe that these are just tools to help people, but many times, kind of self-determination about what it is they wanna pursue over time. And so, that's why I think it's the city's responsibility or opportunity to facilitate that kind of conversation and get people to come together and then decide what it is they wanna do. Maybe the best example, quite honestly, we've talked to council about already, is our downtown. There's opportunities that are kind of unique to them compared to other parts of our city.
So, mainly to Karina's point, kind of what we're talking about is just building some architecture under which we could tell people in the outside world that we're a city that has desires of certain kinds of developments and the attraction of certain kinds of retailers, and here's what we're doing to make that happen.
Karina?
So, to that Denise, I actually wrote down, like, we have to establish, at least from our economic development policies and processes that we're developing, is we are known for. So, when you are starting a small business, you're gonna go to Littleton because you know that there's, the small business there are successful, they're supported by their community, et cetera. So, I think we really need to define that for ourselves in order to implement the policies that attract those types of things. Otherwise, we're just, kind of just shock and approach and just trying to catch everything. So, I think we have to be a lot more focused to define what are the businesses that we are looking to attract to our community, define the economic or financial potential incentives or structures that support that, that are valuable to those kinds of businesses, and ensure our land use policies and zoning are adaptable to those uses. So, I think the worst thing that can happen is that we develop, you know, an economic policy that isn't congruent with our land use policy, and we shoot ourselves in the foot. So, I think the, the first onus essentially falls on us to define what it is we represent, what businesses we want to represent and attract to our community and/or... Or the other important piece of this that we haven't really talked about is expansion of our current businesses and creating growth opportunities for our current businesses or adjacencies to the businesses we have here. They just naturally can attract each other, and that is much more easier than getting something completely new. Like, that was a little bit, didn't have enough focus, and I think that's very, very important.
Well, and to your point too, a bit of this is some identification of what we represent and some strategic marketing as well. One opportunity that we have is called op sites. So, if we identify corridors or areas of economic significance, then we can without charge publish this and seen by developers all over the country. And part of what we can include in that is we show them what this area is and tell them what we're looking for. And then they put it out there, and we can put it out there to developers, and then it will automatically get messages from people who are interested in looking into that kind of development.
What do you need from us as a council?
Just what you said. These policies, we're gonna have to flesh them out in detail here. We're just trying to gauge a level of interest at this point.
I'm with Peggy, go for it.
Sure. I have some comments and questions. Pertained to Bellevue Corridor, it was mentioned in here to find out what citizens want. I, I think that's already been done to a large extent with that document that we passed the other night. So, it wouldn't be, it'd be better to go back to that than to start fresh. My experience with, with this process firsthand was when Rocker Distillery first opened, and I went in there, and I was talking to the owners and do biz all this, and they said, wow, you know, the City of Littleton came to us and gave us money. We didn't ask for money, we didn't need money, but they handed us money because we were a new business. And that to me doesn't seem like, if that was true...
That was not true.
Not true? Okay, I'll let it go then.
Actually, they did get a grant award, but they met the requirements of the improvements to the exterior of that property.
So, they, they did apply for it?
They weren't given money. They were refunded up to the threshold maximum, 50% of what they paid out for those...
Story than they told me. I'm kind of nervous about putting applications in front of other applications because of the experience we're having now with, with businesses that want very badly to open, being apparently in a line of 200 or so. I, I think we could really be causing ourselves some problems unless we have very stringent rules about what it takes to get to the front of the line. That could be just disastrous. And probably the best fix of that is to get caught up. Easier said than done, but we really should have that as a city goal. And my belief is that that perception from the outside doesn't help us attract new businesses. I, I think we are known as being slow and inconsistent for lots of reasons. But that should be, could be at the top of our list of things to fix. And since that's internal, it's, it's very fixable.
If I may, Mayor, just a quick comment? Yeah, I think absolutely, and we'll talk about that this fall. I do believe the same. That's our biggest challenge at the moment here, just sheer workload and manpower. We gotta be able to address that. And the unpredictability of our, of our process. We just don't have anything that's well mapped out at this point. We're trying to solve that problem.
And the internal unpredictability probably helps slow the process down too.
Yes, inefficiently.
That we don't know what to expect of ourselves. Let's see, very important, your, your comment about requiring a percentage of the commercial to be established before going ahead with the residential. We have ourselves a real mess at Littleton Village. I hear from people constantly in my district about what's going to be done. The area in front of that development looks terrible with the weeds growing up, and even the for sale signs are crooked, they aren't well maintained. It looks like the company that is offering the, the property doesn't care about it. It's, yeah, I really do like that idea of requiring that first. You talked about decrease of income from commercial. We need to be very careful not to turn very much commercially designated property over into other uses. Because as soon as we do that, we give up that income for as long as we're going to be around. So, though it may be tempting to have assisted living or other things that don't generate income for us, gotta be really careful. Because gone is gone, you can't get it back. And then, is it possible to tax online purchases?
Is Tiffany here?
Tiffany's here. It's too early for Tiffany to talk.
She's the expert.
So, you might be aware that North Dakota and the Supreme Court, or Supreme Court ruled that you're not required to have NEXUS in order to charge on a state level or online... that you're not required to have NEXUS in order to charge on a state level or online sales tax. So that's definitely gonna change the retail arena. I know we have currently online retailers who have voluntarily collected and remitted, and they continue to, but we still don't have the authority at the local level to require that to occur. I know there are some discussions at the state level with CML and other agencies that are looking to address that. But voluntarily, yes, but we still don't have the authority to, on the municipal level.
Further explain that. So you're saying at the state level, we can collect, so then is the state distributing to the municipalities in any way, or where does it go?
The only reason the state might distribute to municipalities is if it's a statutory city and it's collected by the state and they are voluntarily remitting it, then it's, that's possible for them to remit that to the local level. But as far as us, like I said, we do have some larger retailers who are voluntarily remitting to Littleton as a home role of the city currently.
I have one more. Not for you. My own experience, before I was on council, this is a couple years ago, I tried to help get a piece of property developed. It's in the Oakbrook Shopping Center on the Far East End next to the Division of Motor Vehicles. It's been empty and for sale for 30 years. And I talked to the owner, and he says, "Well, help me find something to go in there." And so I did. I found a developer that worked into him who was developing another property in a nearby city. And I brought that to you a couple years ago, and you had me send him, send him to a consultant in Mississippi. Yes, this is true. And he came back to me and he said, "Those people don't even know where Colorado is, let alone how we can develop there." And he was finished with us. So I would say if we--
I didn't even know anybody in Mississippi to send him to, so that wasn't me.
It was, it was, it was your department, and you're adamant that that didn't happen.
Absolutely not.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure you're still doing that, because that was really counterproductive.
You did send somebody to us, and we actually went through a concept, and I don't know what the issue was, but it wasn't on our end. He had, he decided that it wasn't going to pass, so he just moved away from the deal.
Maybe he had Littleton confused with another city, but he was real sure he got sent to Mississippi.
I don't even know anybody to send him to in Mississippi.
Jerry. Jerry?
Cool. There have been a couple of different projects that have gone to that particular spot, and then the neighborhood was definitely very involved with what was going on in that neighborhood. I was just gonna lead up to that. Economic gardening was something that the city did for many years, and I can't remember if you, I don't know if you were, probably not here yet. And you were there right as we were kind of wrapping that kind of thing up. But it's always been about codes and zoning. Even with our economic gardening on, if we're gonna get these businesses here, we have to have different codes, different zoning. So I think we're on track to finally get to our economic garden goals, which was the zoning and the codes. So maybe you can give us an update on that at some time, if not tonight.
Yeah, in fact, I think we could talk, well, we're gonna talk a little bit later this evening, just about the total list of policy issues or codes that we're taking on here. But probably the most appropriate time is when we get together with you here later this fall into October and talk about specifically the schedule for a lot of your major code issues, complaints specifically.
Good, good. Yeah, 'cause I don't see this a whole lot different. We're just calling it something different.
Correct, it's the same. We're doing the same.
It's the same thing. We've been doing this for almost a couple, 20 years now.
Correct.
But it has changed, because now it's more online purchases are now involved.
Well, that, yeah, that's definitely a part of it, and it has had to morph a little bit to address, you know, the changes in the market. But we still do the same things that we did under economic gardening. That was just kind of a semantic battle that went on here, so.
Oh, yeah.
I do feel like we lost a little ground in terms of being recognized for that program that originated here, but that was previous management that didn't necessarily think that that covered the scope of what we needed to do now.
And we're recognized internationally, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So I'm saying this pretty much the same thing, so is that you agree with that?
Yes.
So good, but it really boils down to codes and zoning. If you're gonna attract somebody, it's, they don't want to have to go have a fight. And that's what happens over there at Oakbrook, is every time someone does come in, there's, we gotta change something over there, and then that's when the neighborhood comes out and doesn't, doesn't want it.
Well, and some issues that people don't necessarily know about is that we had a climbing gym that wanted to come there, and they wanted elevations that were just not acceptable, you know, under the PD. So we don't turn people away. They realize, "Okay, I'm gonna be in for a fight, I'm gonna have to do public process, this or that," and they leave. We don't send anybody else away. We try to work with them with what they're trying to do within the code, and if it doesn't work for them in terms of timelines, it just doesn't work.
Denise, I think years ago, you had created a relationship with a retailer group that they were, and that, when Carol mentioned that story, it triggered that for me. And they were from the South, as I recall.
But I think it's South Carolina is where--
Okay. And so whatever happened with that?
They absolutely did not meet their contract specifications, so I voided the contract with them. They were costing a substantial amount of money, they weren't doing what they said they were gonna do and didn't plan to, so. Like, a lot of those larger companies that do retail, they look good, they have good information, but when it comes down to really pulling retail to your city, it doesn't.
And I think the city attorney had a comment.
Yes, council, I'm going to go ahead and I'll be sending you an email on the waifair decision, which is the online sales tax decision, because there's some unique things about Colorado that is why you're not seeing that implemented on the local basis. And I'll address those, so you have that on your mind.
Well, and what you're doing though, could you look at the, what Colorado did do? I think Denver did it in terms of the collection where, where they, over $500, they would be sent a invoice, or--
Yes, we can address that.
Because that's currently--
Who's tax ass?
Yeah. I think it's on the retail sales side too. We can talk offline.
I'll address both of those.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Kyle?
No questions, but yeah, with Karina and Peggy is, you know, let's move forward and do this, let's be active, be proactive, and not just thinking about what's a gap, what we don't have, or what we haven't had, but think about innovative in the future. I mean, this thing right here didn't exist 11 years ago. I mean, so, I mean, if we think, what are--
That's a phone call.
An iPhone, an iPhone. This iPhone, which is how everyone communicates now and purchases things.
Sure, sure.
Just imagine how retail and commerce and communication was different 12 years ago without this. And so if we're thinking big picture for the community, what we want to see happen in 10, 20, 30 years, it's gonna be widely different, so we need to be very proactive and--
That was my point as well with our economic garden. We didn't like forecast this online thing coming up.
Right.
And so we sort of dropped the ball on that. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have changed codes, shouldn't have updated zoning.
Right, because we probably couldn't have forecasted online. You know, we don't know what we don't know, but I think we have to be prepared to be flexible and adjust, and I think that's where we probably fell behind, that we became so rigid, and we haven't updated our zoning, and, you know, business and the way people do business has changed, but we are not allowing for that flexibility, or we're not nimble enough to change with that.
Yeah, try not to fall behind and be ahead of the curve. Look elsewhere around the country, what's happening, not just the country, but look around the globe. I mean, things that are happening in Europe and Asia are things that aren't even happening in the U.S. now. I mean, it's, I mean, other places are so far ahead of us, different types of commerce and retail and clusters, different industries, so I think we need to be forefront of that.
Well, it's one of the things that we don't even, that we don't even have to do in terms of changing existing is when we took the tour down to Rhino, and they talked about how they're working with zoning, and they're not going in there and making, creating all these challenges for developers, they're really just, and it's a, it's a different world. I'm not saying bring Rhino to Littleton, but I'm saying the philosophy and the thinking that's going into how you, how, when you really want something, how you can make that happen. And they, one example that they gave is that they wanted, the district wanted more density, because they knew that density would bring in the commercial that they needed. And so they, and Denver had a cap on the density down there, and so they did a swap with Denver, a zoning agreement that, "Okay, you'll let us go 16 feet high, 16 stories, rather, 16 feet, ooh, 16 stories, but then in exchange for that, this percentage needs to become affordable." And so, and that fits for them, that works for them, that's what they needed to do. But those, thinking those, thinking about those types of things when these developers come in and there's a conversation, the P4 is a great place to kind of have those conversations, because as you said, if it doesn't math out, then that's, that's--
We can be the greatest police in the world, but if the numbers don't work for them, they're not gonna consider it.
Yeah. Excellent.
It's not much of the developer, it's a very specific business here, or business model. Hey, you know, this, you know, who would have thought, you know, 20 years ago, Chipotle would be everywhere saying, "Hey, we wanna, you, that's a great idea, I wanna, I wanna be the second place to have it, or I wanna be the first, but I'll be on, be on the forefront of that to get, to have where people want to come there to follow that business." That's my way there.
Good conversation. Thank you, Denise.
Yes. Thanks, Denise.
Okay, we'll go into our next one, short-term rentals. Everybody okay if I'm free?
Good.
Steve, to the attorney.
I'm helping Jocelyn.
Good evening, council, and it's a pleasure to be back here and talk about short-term rentals. Here we are. We are honest, Steve. At least for the city of Green, not for the council, that may be different.
He's had his review.
But what, actually, what we're going to ask you tonight, we're gonna have a little bit different presentation than what we normally do. We're not going to talk about the text of a proposed code, what we actually have, working with Jocelyn, we've developed some policy questions, because those policy questions really decide what the text of the code is going to be. So we're going to basically give you the questions, and then you do all the work, and we'll just take down the answers, and that would then help us develop a code to meet your expectations. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead, and we have three basic objectives, we have some objectives that we base the policy questions on, as you see in your council communication. And one of them was provide, essentially, some process for how we manage short-term rentals, because right now, we really don't have a process. We have a business license, but the business license really doesn't provide a process. The second objective, actually, I have to go back, because we have the goals with the objectives underneath. So the first question about this, on this objective is, should we have an annual permitting process? And that's the first question we'd like to pose to you, is if we have an annual permitting process for managing this, should that also include a process to revoke those permits? So the question I'd pose to council is, in terms of this objective, do you feel that any proposed code should incorporate an annual permitting process and requirements for how we manage these?
Council?
Yes.
Kyle?
I would say yes, with the caveat that an initial and renewals may necessarily would be different. I don't see it needs to be go through the exact same thing year after year.
And usually, that's what you would see with most permitting processes, whether it be a conditional use or a license, is that the initial analysis is more detailed. If things have not changed in the subsequent year, you don't repeat the same detail that you would have in the initial analysis.
Karina? You were actually asking two questions up here, so one about the annual, and then the second being the revoking of the permits. So the revoking absolutely if there's a violation. The annual process, kind of to Kyle's point, I don't want it to be overly burdensome, not for the applicant and for the city to manage. So is, as long as the annual permitting process is done in a way that is simple and manageable for, again, both parties here, I think that's, that needs to be considered. Do we have any annual permitting processes for any other businesses?
Not in this city, and--
By annual. Sorry? By annual for tax permit, or--
Well, we, the business licenses are one time for good. You notice no renewal business licenses, and conditional use permits are basically in this city are one time, which is honestly a bit unusual. You normally do not find that. So this would be, again, one of those areas where we're really becoming more consistent. And--
We do have some assigned permits that are annual, so we, and again, I'm agreeing about keeping it as streamlined and as--
I feel a little cumbersome for it to be annual, thinking about, you know, we're kind of swinging way the other way. So we've had licenses that were in perpetuity, and now we're making a recommendation or asking a question is, should this be annual? That seems extreme, and I guess I want to understand why there is a necessity for it to be annual, or how a renewal will be handled.
Just one point now, it was mentioned that liquor licenses are renewed.
Yeah, liquor licenses have renewed.
And your marijuana license, I mean, I'm thinking of some of the higher risk businesses, are those renewed annually or not?
One of the reasons for doing it annual, quite honestly, from both a business standpoint and from a stance standpoint, is it's actually easier to track, because you could either set like a standard date, all licenses expire on December 31st, and in many respects, from someone who's been involved with business licenses and revoking licenses, the tracking is actually easier on an annual basis than what we do with these permanent licenses, because you know that they're all coming up, and you can develop processes and procedures to accomplish that. So in one respect, it actually reduces the burden both for the licensee as well for the city.
Gary?
One of the reasons I do like the annual is because as we get down into objective, through objective one, two, and three, it's, the details there are so important to the neighborhoods. So if we let go for two years, three years, I think that is too long. I think with the one-year permit, it gives us a chance, have they been violating parking? Have they been violating contact? I do like the more short renewal period here.
Karina?
I presume, again, I'm open to this, I'm not necessarily against it, just for me it was more of the burden, but it can be easily addressed. And if they're in violation, I would assume they can revoke it. So it's not that we can only revoke the license at the renewal period, is how I read this, that if you violate it, we can revoke it immediately.
And that would be what I would expect that if council was to proceed with this process, we would build into whatever kind of license we would have, a revocation process to address that.
Right. And then you could also have a situation where you had just a lot of complaints, and they're not, it may not be revocable type complaints, but I think when that annual comes up, that's when that's addressed.
And I think, Mayor Brotenia, we can address it both at the renewal as well as during the process. And for us, it's like many code, we have many code violations, where we address those things on an ongoing basis.
If we have the manpower.
Carol? I like the idea of having a, an annual renewal simply to keep track of who's in business, because businesses come, businesses come and go, and it's good to know whether they're in business or not, or whether they are telling us they're in business or not.
And I think it allows us to, you know, keep revisiting this, you know, if we see some, some things that are changing in the industry or whatever. I mean, right now, we're talking about 10 licenses, I think, you know, but as we see this grow, or maybe not grow, you know, on a yearly basis, we can revisit it and make amendments if additional stuff comes up. So I'm agreeing with everybody else so far, an annual renewal.
And I would agree also on the annual for another reason. I think that, you and you're talking about this--
you're talking about this as someone's home, and so often, people may decide to add a bathroom, or add a bedroom, or pop the top, and so if they're doing those types of things, that whole footprint of what their Airbnb is, or whatever, starts to change. So by doing an annual, then that, that we have an opportunity to pay attention to that, because I, I don't know that there's a place where permits for, for popping the top are going to coincide with Airbnb, so this would be a great place to track those changes.
I think that gives us some guidance on that. And this gets us to the second question. If we have an annual permitting process, should there be a charge for the permit? To, normally, in many cities, you'd have a charge to recover the city's cost in doing that. Right now, we do not charge for business licenses, and we do not, and this is a question that we would want to know, do you think we, based on the council's position, that we should have a charge for the short-term rental license?
Carolyn and Kyle, do we have a, a method set up to collect?
Yes, well, I mean, normally would happen when you are, this would be much like a lot of other planning things, you would file your application, and then the county would pay a fee, and that fee would then be shown in the file as a charge on that particular application, and so it's something that we would be able to do.
We were too limited with other applications, yes.
And I like the idea of having a fee, starting with recouping the costs it takes to administer this. Also like having a fee to cover the, for sure, costs of dealing with inevitable complaints. So it's going to put more, we're going to demand more from our staff, and maybe need another employee or so to deal with the complaints, which will happen.
Kyle and Peggy?
Yes. And, I mean, so this is, in essence, just a business permit?
Yes.
So how do we make the differentiation between, well, this business has to pay, but other businesses don't have to pay?
Well, I think obviously, someday, council may choose to look at that. I think their argument would be, this particular type of business is different than perhaps a retail business in a commercial area. These are generally located in residential areas, they have impacts on adjacent residences, and because of the nature that the city does have a legitimate interest in having perhaps a bit more of a active regulatory scheme than we might have for certain other business licenses that we would issue. And so I think it is a very good rational argument one can make that says, yes, this particular type of license should have a fee.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if, is this like just a sort of automatic thing, as we're saying, keeping track of them, or would there be anybody going out to look at them, as long as there haven't been complaints, or?
Well, normally, and again, you, this type of license, there would be an application, you would have to submit background and some background information. If we had concerns about the background information, we would certainly then go and verify it, so...
But on the renewal?
On the renewal, again, we would certainly go back into our files, we would be checking with the code enforcement, have they had any complaints? We would check with the business license sign in the finance department, have they had any complaints? And so we, there would be work that would be done, even though it may not be the thin level of investigation as an initial application, the answer is, yes, there would be work that would be done, as part of that renewal.
So if, if the complaints, they might get revoked before the year expires, right?
Yes, conceivable.
So if there'd been no complaints, is there a reason to do anything more than just update that they've renewed?
Still takes time.
Pardon?
No, but it probably still takes time.
So that's what I'm just, so it's just a keep current kind of thing, so everybody's aware of what's what?
Well, it could be a situation too, where there, it becomes a nuisance property.
Right, but that would show...
Where it's not, it's not a huge violation, but just so many of them, and it's driving the neighbors nuts.
Right, but that, that then becomes part of the regulation. You might not even get to the renewal, because you get canceled before you get there. So it seems to me a nice, a nice way to keep current on who's still in, who's still doing that, and...
I'm thinking of property management, and some, trying to endow these, short of the term, is difficult. If you just not renew it, it's a lot easier.
Pat?
Yeah, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of this right now. Again, we're talking about 10 permits, at least in today's world. It might be one of those things that preclude people from actually getting a license. You know, I don't know if that's a $20 fee, if it's a $200 fee, but my, I would be more inclined to say, you know, if it's a $200 fee, then you might have people just not say, I'm not going to get a license, I'm just going to do it, and I'll, I'll just apologize later. So my thought would be, let's, let's make this pretty simple, let's not make a big deal about it, at least, you know, year to year. Let's revisit it next year and see if we grow double, or if we shrink.
Karina?
I'm with Pat on that. I think our goal here is to encourage people to get a license, so that we know who they are, we know that they're compliant with the things that are important to us, which is safety, impact, et cetera. I don't want to create anything that becomes an obstacle to that, because at the end of the day, that's really what our eventual goal is. I can see an initial application fee that is very, very nominal, especially as, I think somewhere in here, you talk about providing that they have, they are required to provide, you know, with our noise ordinance, et cetera, so, you know, may go to cover some kind of material that the city provides as, I don't want to call it marketing material, but like informational material to, you know, thank you for, you know, registering your Airbnb, here's some helpful material to share with your visitors, et cetera. So I think it should be very, very nominal, really, honestly, to cover maybe some very basic costs. But again, our goal here is just to get people to register.
Council, in fact, will be limited under table that the fee can't exceed what our actual regulatory costs are. So I mean, we, the city couldn't say, oh, we're going to charge a $2,000 fee, because that would create a table issue, and we can't do that under table.
I would say, I would, I think that I would not take the fee off the table for a couple of reasons. One is that we charge fees for nearly everything, and we, at one point, looked at charging the business license fee, that kind of blew up, and we stopped talking about it. But in terms of, we are actually doing a fee study that tells us, are we in balance with what we should be charging versus what we are? We have undercharged our fees forever.
Substantially.
Substantially, by probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it is not fair for those who are not paying their fees, or who are paying lesser fees. So we're getting that imbalance. This is brand new. This we have, this is a whole new thing. I think maybe there's a place in the middle where the first year goes, and we see what really it is the cost of running these things. I mean, Airbnb's, it's all about online. So I would think if you could create a permitting system, something simple that could be done online, then that would not require people coming in and writing a check. And I don't know, for some reason, we still, I don't know if we figured out how to let people pay their stuff over the, our computer, over their computer for the city anyway. I know people still have to come down there with their sewer bills, but, or mail them. But regardless, that, maybe the first year is, the first year is just us figuring that out and understanding what it would take. It may take $20 a time, and, and everything keeps moving smoothly, so. And then also, when we're doing the, the work on this, what are, are other cities charging fees for this, and if so, what are their fees? Having some information on that would be helpful.
We can show that.
The Denver model is good, Denver model is good.
And then, as you mentioned, our online resources can actually do the grooming, where people can actually pay the fee right through that online resource, so we can address that.
And I do like the idea with a permit number on any advertisement online.
Yeah.
We accept online business applications right now as well, so it's easy to add it to that structure.
Online payments for it.
Correct, but as far as setting up the process for online to make it simple.
Okay. Are we okay with that one, or is everybody, okay?
So if we move into an annual permitting process, right now, we have a few short-term rentals that have the permanent business licenses. And would we want to look at having them also come into compliance with the new regulations over time? In most cities, when you do this kind of regulatory change, because it's not a land use, it's not zoning, it's a regulation, you would eventually phase in so that existing licensees would have to come into compliance. And some cities, it's a year, some cities, it's two years. It's not a long time, but there is sort of a phase in on existing licensees.
Carrie and then Kyle?
So we have eight right now, is that the number that we're aware of?
We have a total, as of when we had the last discussion on the moratorium, we had a total of 10. There were nine, one came in like the day before the moratorium.
Made it up.
So when they, you answered my question, thank you. So when they advertise, do they put the business license on that advertise? Do we have a requirement like that yet?
No, there's no requirement right now that they would have to put the...
So there's 100 of them out there advertising the city of Littleton. We had to do a research on each one to figure it out if they have that license?
Well, what we, if you had regulations, what we would be doing is, is that we would make the various online portals, BBO, Airbnb, and others, aware of this. We've already had some discussions with Airbnb about their customers, and if we can come to an agreement about where they would actually notify their customers and handle some of the remittances that would be due from their customers. So we, my expectation would be, once council does this process, and I don't think it's going to be quiet to go out and get the computer and try to hunt these things down, we're going to work with the various entities to see about getting them in here and getting them in a proper regulatory state.
I think, I mean, with 10, it's easy to figure that out.
It's an easy one.
It's only 10, it's not going to be that hard for them, and they're already playing by the rules, so I don't think it's going to be undue burden for them to play by the rules, they can just do it as quickly as possible, if it's a year or whatever.
Play by what rules?
Play by a permit. The 10, so the question is, do the 10 that have a permit now, are they required to be in compliance with you?
They made that one rule, yeah.
Yeah, so they're the ones playing, the other ones are playing by the rules, so, yeah, these 10, you know, sure.
Just a point of clarification, when you say new regulations, what are you considering would be a new regulation? Because I'm thinking of if we have some sort of housing update, or if there's something that we put in place where every, I don't know, you know, the whole thing came along with egress windows in the basements, and thinking about that. Are you thinking about those types of regulations, or are you thinking about...
I'd say, Mayor, Council, I'd be thinking more in the line of, for example, if we were to adopt a licensing provision, we would normally have a parking requirement. You could not have, for example, many cities don't permit on-street parking for these, they require that you have to have sufficient parking on the property. So we would be looking at those types of requirements, for example, using Golden requires that it be the principal residence of the operator. So it'd be those types of regulatory requirements, because essentially, for our business license, the only regulation that you have to be for our business license is, you come in, you fill out an application for a business license, we send it down to Jocelyn's shop to do a zoning clearance, and that's it. We don't really have a regulatory scheme that addresses some of these other issues. So that's what we're talking about here.
Right, yeah, we're talking about whatever we create for short-term rentals, should the existing have to come into whatever those requirements are, like an annual license or whatever the rest turned out.
Karina?
I say we put it on the table for now, and as we kind of vet out what we end up with, I think we absolutely have to provide the courtesy to these 10 that have obtained the license to have an, an understanding and, you know, really take, give them the courtesy to take the time to review how their business is going to be impacted, so we, we definitely hear back from them.
Yes. Carol?
Yeah, I, I very much like the idea of requiring them to comply, if only because of safety. Safety is what really brought this to a head a month or so ago, so we need them to comply with safety as well.
Yeah. I would agree, I think the other part of this is, is they continue to grow and expand and they pop up, there, they, there is every variation of these types of things. People are renting out whole houses or bedrooms, or, you know, I mean, every variation, we don't even know what we, what we could be dealing with. And I think that this, to not do something like this, puts us in a place where if somebody is misbehaving, we can never get them to be corrected. So we are now only making laws for everybody else because of this bad guy who gets to continue to misbehave. So I think this is smart.
And I think finally, on this point, for the council, building codes and other life safety codes, people have always had to comply with. Whether we have this structure or not, we're going to require everyone in the city to comply with life safety codes. If we find a violation because somebody did a building, basement remodeling without a building permit, whether you're a short-term rental or anybody, we expect you to comply with life safety codes, and this doesn't change there. Now, again, another question for the council is, if we have an annual permitting process, should it cover all short-term rentals, which could be not just a home, but many times, short-term rentals are just a room within a primary residence? Do we cover, I mean, it's very common, you can go on Airbnb or vacation rentals by owners, and some people are just renting out a part of their residence. Do we cover both the part or the, in the whole?
All.
All. All.
Then you wouldn't cover a room?
No.
All of the things.
All of the above.
All of the above.
I'm for it, and I think it's, again, to Debbie's point, but we don't know what it's going to be like today, it's a room, tomorrow it's a couch, I don't know. But, yeah, so it's short-term rentals, then, period.
Now, our next objective is to ask you to sort of look at this...
I'm sorry, I've got one question here. What about, you could rent out the living room too, as a party room for the night, or, or for two nights, you know, somebody comes to town because Colorado is pot-friendly. I mean, would this be covered under that then?
Well, if they, if it's a short-term rental, it'd be covered under this, yes.
But one night, two nights, would still be...
One night, two nights, it'd be a short-term rental. Because short-term rentals would be defined, generally are defined as 30 days or less. So if you came down to meet with your, six of your best friends to explore Colorado's horticulture, you would have to, and that would, that'd be a qualified short-term rental.
You're really funny tonight, Steve.
Right.
Poor Steve.
People always say, lawyers couldn't be funny.
But there you are.
So moving on to the second objective, one of the big things you see across the country, and not unique, I remember everywhere, is sometimes short-term rentals can become a real detriment to the character of an existing neighborhood. People, just like the example I used, people come down to explore Colorado's horticulture, and they tend to be loud and rowdy and...
It was funny the first time, Steve.
Yeah, you, you don't get to on that.
And they can change the character of the neighborhood. So one of the questions would be is, to ask the council, should short-term, because our current code, what we have is we have these definitions for tourist homes that really, you can read them a number of different ways, and the difficulty is, assuming council provides guidance, we would look at changing those definitions. But for us to understand that, the question for you is, should these be allowed in any zoning district, or should they be limited to certain zoning districts? or should they be limited to certain zoning districts? Some cities, for example, will say, short-term rentals are conditional use in all of their residential zoning districts except multifamily. Other cities will say, well, no, they just regulated, but they're principal permitted use across the board. And my principal permitted, that means you just, you're subject to rules and regulations, but you have a right, a matter of right to do it. Conditional means you don't have a matter of right, you have to come in and get a license, and in certain zoning districts, you may have to go through a review process. So the question for council is, how would you view this in terms of that structure?
I mean, Kyle?
So are developing these regulations would make it a conditional use? Is that more moving towards that?
Well, that would be, that's it. That's the question.
The first one is, first, do you want to contemplate allowance where in the city, right?
Right, 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 that's what I was getting at.
That's one question, and it's actually on the screen right now. And that second piece is more structure of process of how you would be allowed perhaps in the different zoning districts.
Okay, short answer, yes.
Carrie?
So backing up, we said the whole residence, but it's, but not the property, because I know there's some folks that have very nice trailers that they can rent out as well.
Still, that would still count, that's, that's like...
That's true.
Any rental would count, doesn't matter what it is.
But that's not the resident, though.
You need like a RV trailer.
An RV type thing, right?
We gotta talk about that.
Talk about that. That probably would evolve a little bit more, because, you know what I mean? We have certain requirements right now, just in other zoning codes and nuisance codes, to not allow that.
I would say any rental, any property, whether it's a car, whether it's, it's...
We don't limit it to just resident, it's just property is the wording.
That's what you're saying, okay.
But a manufactured home would be defined as part of a short-term rental. So if you had a manufactured home in a manufactured home community...
Well, that's like a permanent structure. RV is the thing.
But RV, you just have in your driveway.
See, as you said, we have law code, you can't live in your RV in your front yard. Karina?
I would say yes to this as well.
Carol and Peggy?
Like that email I sent to you at the very end of the day.
Yes.
I've heard from a number of people who very much believe that the existing code says, despite your interpretation, that the short-term rentals are not allowed in certain areas. What can we do to alleviate their concern, if it's only to explain why a little bit more, why their concern doesn't work?
I can certainly, I'll provide counsel with a response to that very question. I think the bigger way of alleviating their concerns is using this moratorium period to where, one of the things we'd propose to do in any regulation is remove the current definitions from the zoning code and put appropriate definitions in the zoning code that actually define what they're trying to do, because the current regulations simply don't. And in fact, we have two definitions that basically conflict with each other, and we propose to get the right definitions in the right place.
I would say another piece to that, and certainly also to what we were saying earlier, is that as we move forward, once you give us this direction, and we come up with some draft rules of what those might be, then of course, we want to make sure we're reaching out to community members to get their feedback as well, so that's another opportunity as well.
Peggy, and Karina?
So there are some, I'll say fairly exclusive neighborhoods in the city that have very tight covenants or covenants.
Yeah, they can ban it.
So this would not override those.
We can't override a...
We just don't enforce it.
Well, I mean, all, all I'm saying is, I don't want to impose on a community that doesn't want this. I mean, if they have their covenants.
We're not...
Well, yeah, but the way the question's worded...
What Karina just said.
I know, but I didn't hear what she said, so, sorry.
And not much along the same line, you know, if they're looking at allowing for plan, plan development, you know, you gotta follow their rules or regulations, if in fact, they allow it. So parking is one of the things I'm thinking of.
Karina?
I want to add some context to this, as far as my position on allowing it in all residential, because if we start to restrict where it can be, then that is actually what creates more of a disruption, because if you just allow it in one area, then you're gonna have, you know, seventy percent of your Airbnbs in one area, and you've just changed the dynamic of that neighborhood, you know. So I think when you start restricting it too much, then you force it in certain areas, and then that truly does change neighborhoods. Whereas if you're opening it up broader, it is more scattered, it doesn't become so concentrated and change things. And in those communities that are planned communities that have HOAs, et cetera, they can, as a community, make that resistance, say, we won't allow it in our HOA, our HOA doesn't allow it. So they do still have that option for those kind of tighter, organized communities.
So moving on to the next question.
Steve, I just wanted to comment on that. I think one of the things that I, I will, on this, my support is really on how we are able to regulate them and keep them in compliance with what are already our, more our norms in terms of neighborhood behavior, as opposed to trying to make it really difficult for people to do this. Because this is, this is an opportunity, and we don't want to, I think there's, the reason these things are so popular is because there's a demand for it, because people enjoy this. This is something new, this is, this is a new way of people behaving, and so being too restrictive is, it just, that, I, I don't, I don't know that anybody on this, I'm seeing heads nod, that that's not really our intention to restrict, but more to be able to manage.
It is important to just remember that the city does not enforce covenants.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah.
So our next question proposed to the council would be, should the city require residences that are rented out as short-term rentals in the residential zoning districts to be the homeowner's primary residence? And by that, primary residence means that you've identified their city, different city shoes, different things. They can be property tax records, they can be motor registration records, they can be driver's license bank records, it can be any number of different things, but they are used, you have to identify this as your primary residence.
Oscar, I know, you know, if someone's, has two or three homes, let's say, and their primary residence is somewhere else, and they're here for six, eight, nine months of the year, just because they're primary residence somewhere else, if they want to rent it out for two or three months, I don't think we should restrict that. So I do think we could say that there is only one license issued per individual, so someone's not buying six or seven homes and then renting all those out as short-term. But to say that it has to be their primary residence...
Per property, so you said per property?
Per individual. So basically, I could not buy ten houses on a block and then rent them each out as short-term rentals, which is a problem in San Francisco. But if I, say, my primary residence is in Malibu, and I have a home here, and I, you know, I'm here half the year, if I want to rent it out half the year, I shouldn't be restricted because my primary residence is somewhere else. But I can only get one license.
Karina?
I'm leaning towards that it should be homeowner's primary residence. I don't think that it should include requiring the owner to be onsite during all rentals. You know, if, if it's not the primary residence, we start, we're, we would be creating a market of second homes, like investment homes, and that can further escalate housing prices. I don't think as a community, we, I haven't gotten a sense or heard that we are wanting to be that kind of community yet. So I, I don't think we should go there yet. I'd say yes to that first part of the question.
Peggy?
I agree. I think what we're looking at is giving people who maybe now have unused space because their eight kids have grown and aren't living at home anymore, whatever, teasing. But they have space that's available, but I don't think we want to have what essentially turns out to be something owned by somebody who's not really there, and all these different rooms are renting out to their people. I just, I think we want to have citizens being part of that residence.
Brad?
I agree with that.
Carol?
I agree that we want the primary owner, and reasons for that are, we've had a letter from a concerned citizen when this first came out, about what, and what is happening in other places where we have investors buying houses to rent out this way, because it's extremely profitable. You can make a lot more money on this than you can a regular rental, and then to end up with the neighborhood, dealing with the consequences of that. Also, for the reason of safety and accountability, for there to be somebody who is really invested in this place, that's the primary residence. So they want it to be taken good care of. They do not want it to be a party house, so they're watching it carefully. They care what happens to it. One of the write-ups we got from the CML literature talked about perhaps requiring the person to live there on the premises nine months out of the year. And so that would kind of address what you're talking about, that they do need to actually live there a certain part of the time. Another thing that came up in those pages was that the owner be reachable at all times.
Twenty-four, seven.
Twenty-four, seven, so if, yeah, so if something comes up, that person can go and take care of it now. And that's really important for the neighborhood. We're talking about something here, we're talking about maintaining the neighborhoods as residences, not about allowing people to make money.
I would like with that, with the, it's the primary residence. I've talked to a handful of folks in the city that do have permits on their Airbnbs, and they actually want that. They want the, they like the primary residence, and I think that's very telling. They're the ones that got the permits, they're the ones that are doing this legit. All but one, we've never had a complaint about. And then I also think that, and Carol made inference to this, and I think Karina did it too, is that, you know, if that's your home, you understand your neighbors. You, you care about your neighbors, you care about your neighborhood, you care about your community, and you're going to be a lot more conscientious Airbnb owner, or short-term rental, where it's like, not everything's a Kleenex. So, not every office is a rocks. But, so I think that, I think that is probably...
Xerox, really?
I, I, yes, what's that about?
Not every zone is a code. But I think that that is a, I think that's at least a really better place for us to start. We can change that, but, you know, baby steps a little bit, I think, for me. Okay, so on that, we've got consensus on the ownership.
So that does limit them to having the one, as we were saying, four, instead of having the...
Well, primary residence only.
So moving on to the next question for the council, some cities will have a maximum number of people who are allowed in a short-term rental anytime. I can tell you, in using Arizona where I was, because the state has made them unregulated, you cannot regulate them at all, sometimes during major sporting events, you will have twenty people rent a house, and a three-bedroom house, and should there be a, a maximum number of people?
Peggy?
So just as a comment, there is a house that looks more like a castle, I don't know what the devil it is, still being constructed.
Prince.
Everybody knows. The number of people that could occupy that, about maybe thirty times the number that could occupy my house. So it maybe needs to be something in terms of number of rooms, or square footage, or something or other, rather than just a number. Not that I think a hundred should be allowed in that place that I just mentioned, but I'm not quite sure how to, what might phrase that.
The council, I think we as staff, based on your direction, we can look at some different options. I think the real question that we need to sort of hear from you is, do you feel there should be occupancy limits in these?
Yeah, I was gonna say what Peggy said. I mean, I would, would a square footage be better? Because I mean, if you have a bedroom, just if you say per bedroom, you could still put two or three bunk beds in a bedroom and get, you know, sick people in there, so.
Kids, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, so I, yes, I somewhat agree, but I also, it's, it's hard to...
Yeah, I'd like to know how we would determine that, but I do think it's important to have a limit.
I think when we come back to you, we'll have some recommendations on how that might be done.
Everybody okay on that? Carol?
It seemed when I was talking with Rebecca Thompson, that we have code already that stipulates maximum number of people, at least you can sleep.
Be doing the building code, so we can look at that, and we can just look at how this might affect.
Say as consistent as possible. I mean, like, to your point, I think a lot of these things exist for just us occupying it as owners, so I think we have a good starting point.
The next question I got on this objective number two is, should we, the city, consider establishing a maximum number of parking spaces, or for that matter, a minimum number of parking spaces, that would be provided on the property for the short-term rental?
Karina? My question here is, isn't that, isn't the parking attached to the property? So if you have, does it really matter whether it's three people living in my house, or five people live in my house? I have three parking spaces, right? Isn't it based on the property, not the individual occupancy?
Currently, that how it's done for the permanent homes, but I think the question here is, let's just say you have a family and you have two, you're not, you're renting out a room. Are you wanting us to look at, if it's a short-term rental, some portion of an onsite property or parking space has to be dedicated to that rental? And we can figure out the semantics of that, but it's whether you want us to make sure that that, they're providing some parking for it.
I think it falls within what they're allowed to do. If your property only allows for three spaces, then you're giving up a space if you're having a rental person there, is how I see it. I don't, I can't see what would be an additional requirement.
Carol and Kyle?
A concern about on-street parking, that came up in that initial big complaint we got, where the short-term rental people were parking all up and down the street, and taking up, I guess, all of the parking. And, and also that one was a very narrow street, and they were restricting the street even more. So I can't, I, I don't know how that would be managed, but I would like to have, if possible, a limit, a maximum, how many on-street parking spaces they could take also.
That, what that recommendation is?
Well, I think that's the question we're asking, yes.
Yes, interesting.
The concern here is that you could have people saying, well, I'm renting, I'm the primary homeowner, I'm gonna keep my two spaces myself, but I'm gonna rent out two rooms, and each of those people have two cars, and now we shunted two cars out into the street for on-street parking, and...
I get the point, I get the point.
I think it's gonna be somewhat related to the maximum capacity that you put into the house too, but I think we all are, yes?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea, but, I mean, is there, if I have a super bowl party and I have fifteen people over, do I have to have fifteen, I realize it's not right to you, but where's the line here that if, you know, you're having people over at your house, that you have to provide parking in your driveway wherever? I mean, that's, it's, I think parking is an issue, but...
Period of time.
Okay, so three of them drink and want to stay overnight, I mean, so they, there are three cars running the street.
Well, you've got that fast.
Annoying, I could.
Stay the night.
Get an Uber.
I, I think the addressing on-street parking is important. I, where I come back to, for example, we have a property that is a rental property, and there are probably five or six cars. Is that allowed? So if it's allowed, you know, if it's good for the goose, you know, the goose and again. So if it's allowed for one, why wouldn't it be allowed for the other? I just want to be... I just want to be consistent as opposed to...
I heard that, bring something back.
I think we'll take a look at that. I think we understand, the council does have a concern about on-street parking, so we will look at that.
Okay.
Now, looking at objective three, which is, this is really providing rules because we want to ensure the public safety of our neighborhoods. And again, what we find across the country is sometimes these short-term rentals can really be detrimental in the sense of creating some neighborhood issues that might otherwise not exist. So to get to the earlier point that I believe the mayor Potemma mentioned, many cities require that any short-term rental contract has to have copies of at least a summary of the city's noise regulations, belonging regulations, trash regulations, and similar types of things that renters are given, so that they know what the rules are.
They know what rule they're breaking.
Move us along. Anybody object to this?
No.
I have a question.
Hey, here's a question.
Yeah, so if I were renting my house, and maybe I'm not gonna be there, you know, I've gone for six months and I'm renting it, who's gonna provide the trash collection? Because that's our individual homeowner.
Needs to be worked out.
Yeah.
Figure that out before you leave.
Just like I do now.
You have to work that out. On the rental.
Take the trash out.
Reminder.
I would think that many cities do, is, many cities require that our short-term rental permits must list to local contact, and that's, there's somebody that you can get a hold of.
Yes.
And we are done.
Good.
Thank you very much.
I like this Debbie.
I love it, love it.
You don't want to rent tonight?
We're supposed to be done at 15.
Can we have a break? Break, break.
People have a penalty if they can't?
I mean, they'll write that in.
Excellent. That's part of the, part of the execution.
Provoking lifestyle. Let's go ahead and get started, this review of our tentative calendar by city manager.
So this is just kind of a periodic check-in. I know that obviously the council gets a copy of this every week, so I think this is just an opportunity for all of us here to talk about, make sure you're comfortable with the calendar here, at least for the next few months, maybe through the balance of the year. So that's kind of the first question. If you have any questions about what you see on the tentative calendar, we certainly can talk about that. I think we've also, as staff, we've attached another document there to kind of show you a list that staff keeps of all of the other code issues, so much quite much like many of you have talked to me about, maybe as individuals, or sometimes multiple council members. So we're trying to keep track of a lot of the code issues that we see. We've tried as staff, we went through a process here early on to identify what we saw as kind of the top priorities, maybe the biggest bang to the buck for a code update, recognizing that once we finish the comp plan, that is the opportunity, kind of goes through a major revision of our codes, and kind of a reconciliation of what we see in the written code versus the comp plan. So we're not gonna get all code changes done before the comp plan is...
Priority-based coding.
Boy, I have made some great inroads there.
Talking like definition?
So I think it's, you know, maybe, again, it's just an opportunity for us to take a look at your calendar for the next few months, and make sure you're comfortable with it. With that, I just...
Whenever something is added or deleted, if, you know, if you can show that on the schedule.
Yes.
Any change, highlight it.
Light, red, you know, line it out.
And maybe even noted at the top of the schedule.
And call Carol up every time there's a change.
Now, they're gonna call you.
Yeah, and obviously, things do move around a bit, for lots of different reasons, but yeah, I'd be more than happy to try to highlight kind of what's changed, and maybe even add an explanation of why.
You need to know why, just know what it is.
And we do, when we, when we do work on the, on the agendas, one of the things that is challenging is, as stuff comes to us that is trickling down out of planning, because they've gone, it's all on their, a lot of this stuff is on their desk first, and then moves to ours. So it ends up on ours, and then there may be other things that we were working on that didn't go to planning that we're queuing up in. So that's sometimes how we end up with some of these six public hearing, you know, second reading public hearings, or a lot of these are kind of stacking up like that. We're trying really hard to prevent that from happening, because as those can, depending on what the issues are, those can become, that can just turn the meeting into just too long, and...
Next thing you know, you have a fifth Tuesday meeting or something.
There you go. But it is, it is challenging with, you know, with some of this stuff, to keep it moved around correctly, but also knowing that there's stuff that, that just has to happen. We are kind of clogging up now because of the budget in September, that always puts a, puts a chink in our best-laid plans.
Well, and I appreciate the point, Mayor, because you remember, starting in June, we had the CML conference, and we had canceled some of our regular meetings, and the Fourth of July, we canceled another. So that's why things kind of moved around a little bit there. August 7th, next week, I'll talk about that a little later here after we have finished this item, but, you know, that's looking to be a pretty robust meeting.
Think?
Yes.
What a nice word.
This might be.
Yeah, and just one other, kind of, the mayor talks about kind of the planning commission here. That is, that's a big piece of our code layout here, so when we, there's documents you don't necessarily see, and we're trying to lay out the detailed schedule of this. You know, it really is almost a four-month process to take a code issue all the way through study session, planning commission, through the city council, and final adoption. So there is a pretty lengthy sequencing that we just have to get right, and that's part of our challenge.
Who ever said government wasn't efficient?
As an engineer, are you looking at process improvement, or working smarter, not harder type of?
Well, I think, yeah, we talked about it a little earlier. I think we have a consultant, his name's Bob Tipton. We are looking to schedule that here in the fall, who's gonna come back and talk very specifically about that issue, efficiencies. I think that is a problem for us, and so we will, we are trying to address that. I won't overwhelm you with my Gantt charts, the mayor giving a hard time about that, but, yeah, I mean, we're doing our best to try to lay out the detail of this, so we can communicate that, not only just as department directors internal at that level, but pushing it down into the, you know, the frontline staff level, so they can understand kind of the implementation challenges here. So efficiencies, yes, we're doing everything we can to be as efficient. Okay, hearing none. I do have a couple of updates if we're ready, Mayor, just kind of the city manager and city attorney updates.
Yeah, can I, before that, can I just ask, council, this is not on the agenda, I wanted to see if this was something council would be interested in at some point putting on the agenda? And that is, when we had conversation regarding, we had the street closings downtown, there were, there were some comments made about the challenge of that. And so there were also some suggestions made from one of the merchants about some things that we might, might do a little bit differently. I've heard from the merchant, and kind of, they're wondering where we are with that. We haven't revisited it, or talked about it. There are some things coming out that would require, that are looking similar to the street closing, where it's not generated by the city, but by the merchants. And there was a request made that we consider revising the ordinance that we approved to restricting to when there are, when there is a organically generated desire to close the streets, that the people who solicit the signatures are a professional independent signature gathering group, similar to what they, what we do require for liquor stores, they have to bring in a paper. And there are other examples of that that is done, that are done beyond that. The conversation is kind of about, around the fairness of people signing that, signing it without intimidation, or signing it without, you know, selling and ordering, or those types of things, and just, I mean, be a lot more of a neutral decision that people make. So they, is there an interest in having the city attorney go back and look at some of those issues that were brought up, and tweaking this ordinance a little bit to, or discussing that?
Yes.
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 Okay.
We're government.
Thank you.
As you said earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta redo my Gantt chart now.
Just put it at the end. That is gonna be my joy.
A good picture.
I know, I already know the situation.
Yeah, you have a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, just a couple of things here. In order for us to be, I think, as efficient as we can with our meeting next week, as you've kind of looked at that list there, there's quite a few things that we have on consent. And there's two items there that I just want to kind of point out, and help you understand why they're there. Obviously, if we got questions between now and the meeting next week, we certainly be able to answer that. One of which we put on consent is the downtown Littleton design standards. And I think the city attorney may have to help me out here a little bit, but the purpose of that is that the, according to our code, the planning commission is the one who adopts that, and then the city council actually ratifies that.
And that's correct. And really, this is an example, one of the things the council said to us, is, when we do things, make sure we get to the final implementation step that we implement them. This is taking you to the final implementation step, so they are fully implemented, so that we have council sign off, and we are fully implemented. So this is really a good example of us changing some direction and getting us to the end of the race and crossing the finish line.
Yeah, so I think, obviously, we had a study session here, I can't remember the exact date, with the city council, where the consultant came in and we talked about kind of the update to where we arrived with the guidelines. And I summarized that, I think the council was pretty pleased with kind of the general direction. There was a few updates, I think, the pursuit of the planning commission there. And I think we all recognize, this is kind of the first phase, there would be another phase that would come later in time. In fact, we've plugged it into our schedule here, still look at the next phase of that, but this is to try to get those guidelines modified to be a standard.
This makes it a standard.
It'll make it a standard. The second item that I placed on the consent agenda for next week is a final plat for a very specific development. And I think I've asked, can you kind of explain what the final plat is for the council's action?
The final plat is the only document the council acts on, and you act in a ministerial capacity, under our code, under Colorado law, essentially, once it's determined that the final plat meets all code requirements, the council's legally obligated to approve it. And if you didn't approve it, we would actually be subject to being sued. Because of that, since there's really no, really any big modifications, in both these cases, the staff has determined they fully meet our codes, they're on the consent agenda, reflecting the ministerial nature of them.
Okay, so just wanted to point those two out here this evening. The last thing I just want to mention is that the council's aware, we've had a lot of questions from some residents and business owners about a gun store, retail gun store that's in South Park. And so we sent out a letter here today to a lot of those interested parties, kind of help explaining kind of the status of that. And council's aware of this, but we've taken that particular application. It was allowed in that zoning, for that zoning district in South Park, so we've allowed the building permit for the retail portion to move forward, that's been issued. So the second part is a firing range, and that's the piece that's still under review. So we've tried to provide the residents here, and again, property owners in general, I guess, just an update about where we're at. In essence, it's trying to answer what it is we can and cannot do, and the level of coordination that's necessary between us and the South Park Owners Association, SPOA. And we're just trying to provide basic information here. We did have kind of a follow-up question that came as a result of that letter here about the city's ability to rezone, and we're gonna address that separately here, probably tomorrow.
Yes.
And so I'm gonna take all of this and send it to council here sometime tomorrow, so that you can see all the documentation for that. So if you want to forward it on to other people, please do so. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? The crit is Saturday, so...
Save my criteria.
The Littleton Twilight Criterion starts at 3:00, last race should wrap around 10:00 or 10:30. And if you have never been, it is a fun time. So, and it's gonna be nationally televised, and we actually have, will have large screens throughout downtown, so wherever you are, you can see the race going.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, the, because of the national, it's now a national race, so it's part of the national circuit.
That's cool.
It's our, I think it's our fifth or sixth year. So that will enable that, and then we will be doing with the awards and all of that, will be televised, and we'll get a lot of, a lot of hype on Littleton, and see our downtown, and so hopefully, we'll have the streets full of people and having a good time.
If I may just add to that, Mayor, there is a lot of work to go through this, and our staff has been working really hard, and I thanked them the other day, we had an all-city staff meeting, and specifically thanked them. Boy, I tell you, the logistics that go into this is deep.
Yeah, we're getting good at it though.
So there are citizens, races, and women.
They can go on the website and pull down it, and you'll see all the information.
Absolutely.
Good stuff. All right, we're adjourned.